For first town meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every heart and justice for all. Can you please put your cellphones on silence or airport mode, please, for the meeting? Okay. Upcoming, future meetings. The community is all invited to an outreach meeting for our new updating of our sign ordinance. Come join us in depth for presentations of drafts and have feedback from the community on these dates. April 8th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, Village Zone. April 15th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, Institutional. April 22nd, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., R1, R2, and R3 zoning. April 29th, 9:00 a.m. to noon will be B1, B2, IP, and ORI zoning. If you're interested in these meetings and the presentations and any questions or feedback you have for staff, they will all be here at those meetings. Thank you. Arbor Day Observance Celebration is on Saturday, April 13th. The town's inviting everyone for Arbor Day Celebration here in the community park. We are planting a couple more trees over here next door. The Town Council Meeting will be on the budget on Monday, April 15th at 7:30 p.m. The Arbor Day Celebration is 8:00 a.m. I'm sorry, I didn't tell you. It's 8:00 a.m. On Saturday, April 13th. There will be no meeting on May 20th for the budget. It was moved to April 15th. Citizen Advisory Committee Meeting is Tuesday, April 16th, 7:30 p.m.
And there's going to be someone from the United Way to explain the Alice level and how it impacts Northern Frederick County. So if you'd like to come to see that. And I'll explain later if you need any information.
Planning and zoning meeting will be Monday, April 29th at 7:30 p.m.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The meeting's actually being canceled, correct? That meeting has been canceled.
Okay. Meeting for the planning zoning on the 29th, quarterly meeting will be canceled.
We'll have a May meeting but not an April meeting.
Okay. Town Council Meeting for May 6th, I mean, the next Town Council Meeting will be May 6th at 7:30 p.m. I need approval of the meeting minutes for March 4th.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 4th. For April, yeah, March 4th.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. Is her second on the motion?
I'm sorry?
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any questions or anything on the meeting minutes as presented? No amendments or anything? Hearing none. All in favor of the meeting minutes? Approved. Please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Five to zero. Police report.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is the police report for the March 2019. Not a whole lot to talk about for the month. I mean, the thing we had most was, you could see, is like the alarms. For some reason, those were going up, homes and whatnot. Had a lot of traffic stops this month. We had 160 of them. You can see the citations. A lot of warnings issued out, too. Had some parking complaints, parking citations that, from people parking in the yellow curb, mostly down on West Main area. The arrests, you can see those. We had three traffic arrests, two criminal juvenile arrest, a warrant, and a criminal summon served. Any questions on any of that? I know I'm kind of going through it kind of quick, but... On the back, the additional information, we had, there was three, three crashes required a report out of... Where did I have it at? There were seven collisions in town. Said three of them needed a report. There was a juvenile, we've located a juvenile who was actually stealing bikes. I found him in the park one day, I think, two weeks ago or something, and was able to charge him with the theft of a bike. So, I don't know if that's the one who's been taking the majority of the bikes and the parts off the bikes, but was able to find him luckily in town. You can see on there what Deputy Hall and myself had each. I mean, we had a lot of court days. I think we had nine between two of us. I was off for a little bit, beginning of the month. And one thing I had, sent to me today, was a video clip of someone trying to get into cars again. On, this was up near East North Avenue. Somebody was nice enough to send me the video clip. The person who, whose video, or whose truck was attempted to get into was someone who's, they were successful the time before, so like I know I've said before, if people are successful, they're going to keep coming back to your same vehicles in the same areas, so which happened to be this good. The vehicle was actually locked this time. I'm not sure, we're not sure who it is, but it was, I think, a Friday or Thursday night, or early Friday morning around 3:30 or so. And so, once again, make sure your vehicle doors are locked. Anything of value taken out of you or taken inside the house. And we had 18 school safety checks between the two of us for March, so that's a pretty high amount, so... Any questions about anything that we... Yes?
You were talking about getting the bike registration program?
Yes.
Here. How's that going?
As far as I know, nobody's registered a bike yet.
But it's out there?
Yes, yeah, it's on, they know how to do it.
They come here to do that?
They can come here to do that. There's a form. Just need the vehicle or the serial number on the bike.
But you said you'd go out there and help them find it?
Yes, if they can't find it, we can help them. That just helps track them down, because there's, sometimes people call in like abandoned bicycles. And instead of just taking them all the way to our office in Frederick, we can just store them local. So someone doesn't have to go to Frederick to get them. So, yeah.
Yes.
Have I got a chance and opportunity for you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Bike Safety Rodeo. I was wondering if we could do registration there for bikes locally. The other part is, the Frederick Bicycle Coalition has asked me to ask the deputies if they can partner with the deputies in order to get the flyers into all the local schools in the Catoctin Cluster. I don't know if you're able or allowed to, but if that could be investigated?
I can, I can, I can ask my sergeant about that or email him. If somebody wants to email me, I can forward. That way Deputy Stocks and myself can figure out what we can do with the Catoctin and the feeder schools for all them.
That'd be great. And this is something they wanted you to have from their organization.
Okay.
So, if I can hand this off to you, that'd be great.
Sure.
Sure. Thanks. And I'll have somebody contact you and...
Very good.
Hopefully in the next 10 days.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Sounds good.
Any other questions, Deputy Whitehouse?
Just one. I'd just like to be an SRO.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Was she doing SRO duty?
No, no, I was...
Was that with someone else?
Yes, that was Deputy Mossdahl.
Oh, never mind. I thought you were the one doing the duty, sorry.
No. That's okay.
How's he doing?
He's doing good. Yes. Seems to like it, so...
Alright.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I thought it was you, too.
Thanks.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
Town Manager's Report?
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for February of 2019. I'll highlight some of the pertinent areas. Related to the streets, staff plowed, salted, and shoveled for a couple of snow events and repaired and replaced some streetlights due to accidents. They repainted some yellow curbs along West Main Street. Cold patched potholes around town. Repaired some street signs and conducted the monthly street sweeping. In the parks, they conducted their weekly park checks. Related to water... Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. The well levels, the lake quota is still being met and/or exceeded. Well number three, four, and five are still shut off to allow less gallons per minute through the plant. As you can see, the water production and consumption, we produced an average of 246,490 gallons per day and consumed an average of 219,130 gallons per day, with the difference of backwash water being 11.9%. We purchased 378,200 gallons of water from the Mount in the month of February. Related to wastewater, we received 4.6 inches of precipitation in the month of February. We currently have a surplus of 24 inches over the last six months. The wastewater treatment plant, we treated an average of 841,000 gallons per day and consumed 198,340 gallons per day, which means that 76.4% of the wastewater treated this month, or in the month of February, was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage in February. However, we exceeded the plant's design capacity eight times in the month of February. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of April. And you'll see highlighted some of the meetings I attended in the month of February. Just some noteworthy items. Staff upgraded some of the water meters. And they insisted, assisted the contractor with the sewer re-lining on East Main Street. Staff is, at the county's request, doing some painting inside the community center at the hallway and the second floor hallway in the library. Staff was continuing to work on the grant funding for the pumping station. And the LG Sonic should be installed, I believe, either this week or next week up at Rainbow Lake. And that's all I have.
Is there any questions for Town Manager at this time?
Yes, sir. Just a quick follow-up on the sewer lining. Since the sewer re-lining has occurred, has the system been tested by snowmelt or heavy rains? I mean, have we seen any improvement, or has it actually led to an increase of volume?
Well, we really wouldn't have the numbers yet. It's only got, it hasn't really been completed for about a month yet. And I think fortunately, outside of maybe one day, we haven't had a lot of heavy rain. As you know, this whole project's going to go hand in hand with the new pumping station. And we're certainly going to look at the numbers. I know Dan's anxious to see what kind of improvement we're going to get out of it.
And hookups with the households, no issues and...
No.
Augering those and such? That's great.
Right. And you'll see with the upcoming budget, we have two other areas that we're going to do in this upcoming fiscal year to continue with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritz?
No, I didn't have any.
Mr. Buckman? Glenn, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
I just have one. Was the sewer, the pumping station flooded in February with all the rain we've had?
I know. I think fortunately, we got away without it flooding.
Thank God. Alrighty. I have no other questions. Thank you. Commissioner Comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What happened? I get you.
Did we miss something? I'm sorry.
He skipped again.
No. Oh, yes, I did.
Yeah, I'll wait. I'm happy to wait.
I skipped him the last time. Sorry, Zach.
It's all good. Okay, so this is...
Town Planner's Report?
Yep, this is the Town Planner's Report for February 2019. I'm also going to highlight some key areas of the month. I prepared comparison charts for the existing and proposed sign amendment. I did send those out to the commissioners. Hope you, if you didn't receive them, let me know, please. Fielded multiple resident and business questions regarding the proposed sign amendment. I wrote a newsletter article on the proposed amendment also. That went in the news, the newsletter this recent month. Fielded multiple resident and business questions regarding the proposed cross-connection control program. For Community Legacy, I finalized the fiscal year 2017 grant for 317 West Main Street and 309 East Main Street. And I resubmitted some 110 East Main Street for the fiscal year 2019 funding. For MS4, I distributed and published the 2019 MS4 Project RFP. I researched and scheduled the 2019 Annual MS4 Employee Training. This will be held on April 9th from 12 to 2:00. For permits, I processed and approved the following zoning applications. Two new homes in Brookfield and two change-of-use permits. For the Planning Commission, received, processed, and provided comments on a sketch plan and traffic impact analysis for a new 8,380 square foot Rutter's Convenience Store. The proposed facility will include seven gasoline fuel islands and five diesel fuel bays along with a truck scale, 28 short-term tractor-trailer parking spaces, and 59 passenger vehicle parking spaces. This will be located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of US 15 and Maryland Route 140. Miscellaneous, I worked with IN Design and provided comments on the first draft for the Town Square and Visitor Kiosk Panel redesign project. I attended fiscal year 2019 Quarter II Budget Meeting. Fielded multiple bridge project questions and complaints. Created and submitted the 2018 Planning Commission Annual Report. Created and submitted the 2018 Department of Natural Resources Forestry Report. Provided updates for the 2020 Census. Gathered information for the 2020 Planning and Zoning Budget. Let's see, attended EBPA meeting to speak on the proposed sign amendment. And I started organizing old files.
Any questions for the Planner? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ritz? Mr. Buckman? Mr. Blanchard?
And I said earlier, you think that trailer outside on the other side of the thing, you think that's Rutter's?
I believe so. They're getting ready. I'm sure they're over there surveying.
Okay.
Getting ready, so...
Okay, just curious. Alright, cool.
I noticed that the surveying stakes go all the way up to North Alley?
For the Rutter's?
No, for the bridge. Are they getting ready to put the new sidewalk and curb down? Is that what they're going to do?
I don't think so yet. I don't, I don't think so yet.
Noticed that the new stakes and stuff were up. I don't know if you have time. I don't know if, is the North Seton Avenue Bridge in our town limits, or did you cross the bridge and you're out of town limits?
I believe that's in the town limits and then right after that.
I don't know if anybody can go down there and take a look at the bridge. It's falling apart. It's in really bad shape. It needs looked at.
Okay.
I don't know if state can look at it, or if somebody from state can look at it, but...
I'll contact...
The whole top piece is going to fall off, I think.
Okay.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
About three years ago, we asked the state to look at that bridge. We had a meeting here. And it's not on, slated to be replaced.
Right.
And we also had the Maryland Department of Natural Resources here to look at it, too. It was maybe four years ago, but I want to tell you, we're, we've been actively in pursuit of that, too.
Maybe they can come up and look at it again. It's gotten worse, really bad shape last couple of years since then.
Sure.
The whole top cap on the bridge is falling off. On the concrete sides. On the northbound side.
Wow. That's good.
Now, Commissioner Comments. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll remind everyone I said nothing last week, so bear with me. Okay. My understanding is the Friends of the Emmitsburg Library will be co-sponsoring an event at the library on Saturday, May 4th. It's a youth program. It is free, and I'm told that it will be a great program. This Sunday, April 7th, will be our first Trail Day of the year. Breakfast will be served before, lunch will be served afterwards. It's free. In between, we'll have a fun workday taking care of the trails. That's April 7th. We'll meet at the Rainbow Lake Picnic Area on Hampton Valley Road. The next Trail Day will occur on May 5th, and the last of the spring will occur June 22nd. On the trails, rather, near the trails, this past week, I had a chance to talk to a Department of Natural Resources Officer, Officer Warden. And he shared that his real concerns right now have been fairly limited. Just making sure folks who are fishing up there have fishing permits. He says he hasn't run into many issues, but I don't know if he's spoken to the town office about that. But he was, he was very user-friendly. Moving beyond there, I was contacted by a member of the community regarding Ski Liberty, which has been purchased by a new organization. They're going to be doubling, according to him, their costs for skiing. And he said that he had some concerns about that because he worries about the tourism benefit we receive in the winter from folks coming through town and dining and gassing up and so on. Also, he says that with the new organization, the new ownership, rather, there's been a reduction in the community outreach by that organization. So he's wondering if anybody else has seen that and if perhaps the town might reach out to them and welcome them as an organization. And maybe we can liaise, so to speak. Moving from there, let's see. I attended the Community Heritage Day Committee Meeting the other evening. I found it very productive. I brought a member of the NICA organization. They've committed to camping here on a private property near the mountain. They anticipate so far a minimum of 60 young people and guardians and parents attending with them for Community Day. They're very excited about that, and they are broadcasting that in their social media. And they're getting a very positive feedback. I know some folks from the Pennsylvania youth groups are also interested, and some from Virginia have expressed an interest. So hopefully, we'll see a good turnout there of young people. But be mindful, there will be more people on bikes for Community Day. Going from there, I'll bore you guys a little bit further. On, I believe it was the 17th, on St. Patrick's Day, I wandered around the trails and flagged it where the Sawyer work will happen. So the work crews will see where the trails are, so that has been completed. It's taken me a while because of some health issues, but I finally got to it, and I'm glad to report that it's done. And the final thing is, I'll sound like the Roman senator who hated Carthage, the rival empire to the Roman Empire, with Carthago de Landis est. With the Rutter's that's coming, I think it's a great addition to our community. But I really want us to be mindful in our, looking at the architecture of the facility, the possibility of light pollution for people across the highway, and the landscaping, so it's done appropriately. So it represents the best qualities of our town, what we are and what we aspire to be. So I hope that is considered as we look at what the gas station and the service center offers. So that concludes my comments.
I do have one for you.
Yes, sir.
I had a town resident walk the trails, been walking them all winter long. And he said there was a lot of big debris down. You might need some big chainsaws and stuff to do to clean up.
You got it. We have our certified sawyers going to be, are going to be there with us Sunday. And our spotters are going to be there with them, so we, we hope to remove as much as we possibly can. But it's, it's all volunteer, so we're kind of limited. But we have two more workdays, and I would love to have the opportunity to talk to our gentleman from the Vigilant Hose Company again. They sent up some young bucks who cleaned it up in about three hours, and they were really hungry afterwards. So we fed them a lot of pizza, and it worked out really well. So hopefully, we'll see him again. I don't know. Just saying. So I hope we can get that done sooner rather than later. Certainly, it will be done, I can assure you, before Community Day. Absolutely, we'll be done before then.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
Yeah, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm hoping that spring finally stays with us. And in our town newsletter, it came in with the water bills. There's some information for some community concerts this summer and a, an event in Memorial Park for kids and kids at heart, scheduled, so stay tuned to that. Thank you.
Is that on Channel 99 also?
Should be, I think.
I believe if it's not up yet, we'll make sure it's up tomorrow.
I'll talk to Terry, too.
But I'm pretty sure it is. Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Buckman?
Just, I want to remind people, because we always forget, bulk trash pickup is this Saturday. There's two items per family, and it's Pickers Delight, so you might actually lose a couple items and then put a couple more out. But there's certain rules as to what you can put out and how it is put out, and it's on the town website.
Yes.
And since you were talking about fishing, Commissioner O'Donnell, I believe we can get licenses here at the town office, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And then finally, I did send you guys a picture of the Emmett Gardens Bridge on 15. And the trees haven't been cleared there in a long time, and if there's a big rain, the whole community could get flooded. There's a lot of trees down.
We passed it on State Highway, and they were sending it up their chain. So that's, that's the best that we can do. I can follow up, but...
We have someone there who was clearing it, and I just thought that was too much liability. His heart's big.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanchard?
Sure, just a couple things. Last Friday, I was able to attend the, let me make sure I get the right initials there. Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, along with Mark Long out in Hagerstown. It was an interesting program. It was an all-day program, dealing with, you know, nuts and bolts of planning. There were planning officials from all over the state that were there, mostly Western Maryland. But it gave me a chance to kind of talk to people that are in the role of planning liaisons, et cetera. Overall, this is a very interesting discussion on different things, what was happening economically in Western Maryland, and ways that we can kind of prove the counties working together in the townships, et cetera. So it was useful. I appreciate that, Zach. And the other thing is, I know we have Arbor Day Celebration coming up on the 13th. I've already registered, actually, to attend a, what was it called? The Emergency Preparedness Training on April 13th down in Frederick City. It's going to be handling issues such as CPR, stop the bleed, marcon administration, et cetera. So I'm not sure if anyone saw that email or not a couple of weeks ago. I signed up for it, so I'm going to be there all day. Arbor Day is great. I was there last year, but this thing also starts at 8:00 in the morning down in Frederick, and I'm going to be there all day on the 13th. And the last thing I have, thanks for making copies, by the way. This is from the Food Bank. Did I take one, pass it down? This is basically, I just want to kind of give you numbers of the number of people we serve each year. Phyllis Kelly, the director of the Food Bank, put this together. And we provided a key with it, so I'll wait till, let's see, if anyone gets a copy of it. So basically, what you're looking at, if you would, this is from 2018, going from January to December. The HH is number households, individuals, volunteers, volunteer hours, et cetera. On average, we serve roughly about 55 families per month. Individuals, about 126 per month. Volunteers, about 41 different people over the course of the year. And then volunteer hours, about 86. And then total items collected or items weighed on average per month, it's about 16, almost 1,700 items collected each month. So the Food Bank, just wanted to kind of give you an update on this, you know, how it's going. I know Phyllis Kelly came to one of our meetings and talked about the building, what's happening with it. And I know she appreciates working with you, Zach. Whatever's in the works, I'll just leave it at that. But I just wanted to sort of put some concrete information in your hands, because I know data's about everything. The number of people we're serving, individuals, et cetera. Just wanted to give you some concrete information that we are making a difference in this community. You know, it's, it's an effort, I think, that's been in the works for years now, and we're continuing forward, obviously, in 2019. So, thank you. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Can you let us know, if like, I want to donate to the Food Bank, how do I do that? If it's food or monies or...
The hours are actually, I think, on the website. You can either go when we're open, or you basically bag it, put it right in front of the Food Bank itself, right in front of the door. So... Just check the expiration dates and everything. We do have a tendency, I have a lot of people donate food, and we are required to look at expiration dates, and as much as we like getting food from people, we can't put food on the shelves that's already expired. So it amazes me how many people are like, let me clean the cabinets, and I'm like, we can't accept that food at all, unfortunately. So just be careful about that. So, thank you.
I know Jubilee Donates Meat and...
Yes, it does. Yeah, Jubilee's a good partner with us in a big way. Yep. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you. I don't have any comments at this time.
Mr. Sweeney, can I throw in one more thing?
Yes.
I apologize.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
The Catoctin High School thespians are putting on their first play of the year. They have, their first show will be this Friday night. They'll have a matinee, 1:00 on Saturday, and their final show, if I understand it correctly, will be Saturday night at 7:00. And the musical is The Pajama Game. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
No, thank you. Pajama Game. That's good, Pajama Game.
Saucy, yes.
I saw it in New York. Well, it was good. The, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time. Just a couple of updates with Food Bank. I'm sorry. There we go. We listened to the request for, to find a new place for them. Sorry. And we spoke with Ms. Kelly on several occasions, and we also visited the site. We approached the county for a grant, and we spoke to the owners of the property. There are several short fuses on getting the grant money and people being more settled if they want to, you know, if they want to sell and things like that. And we're, can't do it this year, but we're going to actively go after it for, for next year to get on the county's budget to do it. It was just, it was just too quick. They're, they're kind of cutting everything off right now. But that, that was a good move. 140 South Seton, our property there with the sign out in front, it's not, it will be for sale soon, but right now, it's for rent. We're going to subdivide the property off, the house off, and sell it separately and retain the back building for... buil- back building for town use. We need it for all our work, street work, equipment and lawn work. We will bring this to the, this process really won't start until May or, or June, and we will bring it to the board for your approval all the way along of what we're trying to do here. But we, we just think we like, like to sell it and pay off that, or get as close as we can to paying off that loan we've had for oh, oh, fifteen or sixteen years on the property. In the meantime, we've been approached by somebody who would like to maybe let, rent the property, and we're looking at that, but we're still moved to go ahead and subdivide the property. Schedule, we are officially a tree city. I took a year to, from last Arbor Day, Arbor, and it's official, and, and that's really a special in, in the green continent. And this last Saturday, the OPC Awards Luncheon, I attended with Commissioner Sweeney, and it was a very special, special luncheon, as, as it always is for volunteers and community service. I think there's one more thing. I, I listed some things here. I went to a climate change course I'm involved in. It was held in March. Was over at the, at Mother's Seaton School for a couple of events, and we had Dawn Oshbacker, County Sustainability Program, Program Manager, as our guest at our last Green Tea Meeting. Elaine Schmidt, happy ninetieth birthday, and we celebrated that with a breakfast over at St. Joe's. And I had a luncheon with Sister Martha, Bernard Franklin, VP at the Mount, and I and Van Elder from the Mount. We talked, we're talking about something that may, may possibly occur. I thought there was one more update. There's something else for, that's new. What, I can't, I can't read my notes, but I thought we had one more. Oh, the EV station. We, our, our electronic vehicle station is open, and is, it's open for business, and for, for a short period of time, we will probably not charge anybody to get it. We're, we're on, if you go something like Plug In America, we're already on there, and that first person showed up this very day we had open. But it's, we're on, we're on the map as a service to them. I think that's all, Commissioner Sweeney. Thank, thank you. Oh, we're very pleased with working with the food bank. We're trying, we're going to every, we've gone to several other locations. It's just not right now working, but we're, we're working on it. Thank you.
I appreciate your help with that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. I, I did have one thing I, I forgot to bring up. The Lions Club will be donating trees for the Arbor Day for this year, for our planting. They want to make sure I got that, and that is on the flyer, the Lions Club's insignia. All righty. Public comment. Mr. Hassett, for 2020 Census, please come up and give your full name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Jim Hassett. I live in Walkerville, Maryland, nine east Pennsylvania Avenue, Walkerville, Maryland. I am the recruiter for Frederick County for the 2020 Census. I'm here to help give you some jobs for your people that live here, and I'm looking for help from you to help me find people to work. These jobs are temporary jobs. They last eight weeks or more, depending on workload. They're paying twenty-one dollars an hour plus fifty-eight cents a mile. They can work up to forty hours a week, eight hours a day. During the process, you'll tell me how many hours you want to work, and you'll tell me your zip code, because we're going to hire local. People will be working within the area that they, that they live, so they're not going outside the area. The process to apply is really simple. It's just going out to 2020census.gov/jobs and filling out the application. What we're looking for right now are more recruiting people like me, not necessarily for Frederick County, but for areas around. We're also looking for people to do address verification starting in July, because your, the whole census is based on addresses. So we have to build a good address database before we can send out flyers or do anything else. That training will start in July, and will take place probably in August, September, October, is when, when they'll be actually doing out the work. The enumerators will actually be starting one year and one day from today, since one year from today is Census Day, April first, 2020. On the second is when people will start to deploy, going out knocking on doors. They'll be hired in the February, March timeframe for 2020. Once again, those are all paying twenty-one dollars an hour, fifty-eight cents a mile. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, or if there's any organizations that you know of that would like me to come up and give a full explanation of the program, I'd be willing to do that also.
I would like to encourage you, maybe to talk with Sister Mart at the Seaton Center, because they would have a pool of people that are looking for jobs.
I've, I already contacted the Seaton Center. I'm working with the library downstairs. I set up once, once a month, I set up a table at the library downstairs, and I will through, through the rest of the year. I also recruit Mount St. Mary's. But I'm looking for everybody I can, because like I said, we're hiring locals, so I need to get people each, in each zip code to hire. And up in this area, it's, it's kind of tough
Right, because it's rural.
To get people, you know, to, to find people to talk to, which is why I'd like to come to the town halls and talk to the people and see if you guys can help.
What's the age? Do you have to be eighteen to work?
Eighteen, US citizen, social security number, and a valid email.
Okay.
Those are the basic. And if you're born after fifty-nine, you have to have registered or selective service, which most high school kids do. They, whether they know it or not, they get that a lot of paperwork in senior year, and one of those is usually selective service.
Can, I'm sorry, one more question.
Go ahead.
Can people work around, I guess, do they have to work like eight-hour shifts, or what's the...
Like I said, you're going to be setting your own hours. We're going to ask you how many hours you want to work. If you stop and think about it, address verification can be done anytime the sun's out, where you can see the address. You're really not talking anybody. You're just verifying the address and the house, what type of, what type of house it is. So as long as the sun's out, summertime, you can see eight, eight, nine o'clock at night, you can still see the addresses. So even if you're working full-time, you could actually do this. The enumeration has to be done when people are home, so that'll be late afternoon, early evening, and on weekends. You're going to set your hours. You're going to have a supervisor that's going to give you an assignment. You're going to go do your assignment, and the best way you see fit to do that assignment, and he's the ones that can take care of your time sheets. These jobs also pay weekly, so you're not having to wait for a check to come in every two or three weeks. Every week, you're going to get a check put into your bank.
Do you have a handout with this information? We can test it.
I've got, I've got the handouts back here, and I can leave you. So I'm not, and I think, I don't know if they put me on ninety-nine or not. They said, when I talked to the office, they were going to put me up on ninety-nine.
Yeah, you're up on ninety-nine. We have some of the flyers, and I think you had little business cards they were handing out.
So it's twenty-one dollars an hour, forty days, forty, forty hours a week.
You can work up to forty.
Set your own schedule.
Yeah.
And when are you looking? You starting now, or...
We're hiring all year.
You're hiring all year long?
The recruiting assistants are, are being hired all the time. I got, I started work in January. I was in the first set.
Right. We do have a, we had a job seminar, or job fair here. I forget when that was. Was that in September, October? We do have a job fair here in October.
I'd like to come up and set up for that if I could. I'm, I'm going to do the, I'm doing the Great Frederick Fair, and I'm doing all the other places.
Amanda Talker's right there behind us.
Okay, good. I'll find out.
Any other questions for Mr. Hassett?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Frank Davis?
Good evening. Frank Davis, 28 West Main Street. Just real quickly, a little concerned about the Backflow Preventer Program, or the Cross Connect, I think you're calling it, Cross Connect Program. Fully agree and know why it needs to be done and support it. What I don't quite understand is why there would be a fee to be paid to the town. We have to pay a plumber to come in every year to inspect the, the systems, but why would we have to pay to register our systems, and then again, every two years, pay another fee? Not quite understanding that one.
Let me ask Steph. Kathy, do you have an answer for that?
That, it is on the agenda, so we'll all be on, I'm all on the agenda, but the, the short of it is all the paperwork and the inspections that we have to send to MDE and staff time to maintain it, is, is the short answer of it, without getting into too much detail, which is in the agenda.
Okay.
It just seems like the, the, the townspeople are getting double whammied with paying the plumber to come in, put it in, coming back every year to inspect it, plus we have to pay the town something.
You have to register each...
So it's, if I understand, last year or last meeting, they said every two years we'd have to re-register and repay.
The residents don't pay anything.
The residential does, and it's business, I think.
It's commercial only that passes.
Commercial only has to come in every two years.
And there, it's costing us about five hundred dollars a crack every time they come in, so.
She said it's on the agenda, so we'll be talking about it some more.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't see those gentleman. Suzie Glass?
Suzie Glass, I just wrote my name, just in case. I needed to say something. I really just came to see, see the new key, the new kiosk, and then listen to the new ordinance. So, okay?
Right. Thank you. I don't have my yelsey on the public comment. Administrative business. We have proclamation for April 2019 for the National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
You have representatives here.
We have representatives here for that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Oh. Good evening. Did you give your name and your address, please?
Yes, I will. I am Pat Bradshaw. I live at sixty-six, sixty-seven Coldstream Drive in New Market, Maryland, and I am the co-president of the Friends of the CAC. I just have a very brief remarks to make before the proclamation, if that's okay.
Okay.
The Friends of the CAC is an all-volunteer, private, nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting the work of the CAC in meeting the needs of children who have been abused in Frederick County, as well as advocating for the prevention of maltreatment. You probably know that the statistics are very sobering. Across the United States, more than four children die every day as a result of child abuse, most of them under the age of three. One in four children will experience family violence, and one in eight children will have a substantiated case of child maltreatment by the age of eighteen. So the statistic for Frederick County, our, our Child Advocacy Center served two hundred and thirty-six children in 2018. Half of them were from the city of Frederick. Six of them were from Emmitsburg, which is three percent, and the rest were scattered around the county. Often the children and their family members need services and support beyond the scope of the CAC, what the CAC can provide as a government agency. So the Friends of the CAC try to fill this gap. Most recently, we added a mentoring program where we pair up, two of us will meet with clients, with the mentee, and just try to provide support when they're going through this difficult time. So by having these proclamations, you show your support, and if we can plant pinwheels all over your town, that would also help. It's just to bring awareness. If you want to do more, you can put a blue light in your window for the month of April. You can wear blue on this coming Friday, which is the official Wear Blue Friday. And there's also an event at the Healing Garden at Bonita Mass Park in the city of Frederick, which is on West Second Street this Saturday, which is for families. We have kids' activities, and I think Eris is going to be there.
Eris will be there.
And our, and our precious Eris will be there also. But I guess most importantly, please remember that everything you do to promote the prevention of child maltreatment is appreciated and will make a difference. So thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Does anybody have any questions?
Just one.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Sorry. I have the flyer for April being Child Prevention Month, Child Abuse. Can I have one of those, if I have a chance? Give a flyer for it?
A flyer for it?
Yeah.
Um, I can... We can get you one. We can get one.
Okay.
Send one electronically. We'll get...
All right. If you just send it to me electronically, that works. All right, thanks.
Uh-oh. I do have one question. Can we put some of these on the square?
That's it.
Yeah, good. And, and the planting, we have plant, new planting areas. We can stick these in on the square.
That'd be great.
On north, southeast, and west, so everybody can see.
That would be wonderful. I, I have, I brought a lot of them this evening, so you can take them.
Okay, if you can give them to our town staff before you leave, and they can have them placed down into the planting areas. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Proclamation. You, Mr. Mayor? Do you have a proclamation we can go again?
Okay. Well, let's go. Proclamation, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2019. Whereas child abuse prevention in a community is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas the effect of child abuse are felt by the whole community and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because partnerships are created among social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, local governments, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas youth-serving prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage youth to develop strong ties to their community. And whereas all citizens should become involved in support, supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty, 2019, as Child, National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Emmitsburg, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, businesses, to increase their participation, the efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the Emmittsburg community adopted this day, the first day of April 2019.
Thank you. Yeah, do you have, we have the sign to give to them? Are we giving it to them?
Keep it.
Oh, we keep it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You want to do a photograph? Do a photo with the mayor for that?
Yeah.
Do, do you have the proclamation? Do you get a picture of?
We don't. I think last year's picture was with them and the pinwheels.
Oh, okay.
We don't have an official proclamation. This, she has one to sign.
All right.
Take your pinwheel.
You guys want to be in the picture?
Two years ago, we were, but last year, we weren't. We could go.
Okay. Bring your pinwheel.
I'm positive. I'll step out of the room real quick.
Daughter-in-law, by law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law. There you go. Okay, ready? I'm gonna take a couple. One, two, three, and I'm gonna do it in a second. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 no. Thank you for coming.
You may have to...
Arbor Day.
You want to be the next one?
Okay. Item number two for administrative business is proclamation for April thirteenth, 2019, as Arbor Day. Mr. Mayor?
Glenn, read it.
He's asked me to read this one, so I'll handle this one. Proclamation of April thirteenth, 2019, as Arbor Day, presentation, ad meeting by Mayor Briggs and town staff. Proclamation of Arbor Day on Saturday, April thirteenth, 2019. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, given its paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires... set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource given as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, do hereby proclaim April 13, 2019, as Arbor Day in the town of Emmitsburg. We call upon all citizens and organizations to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, adopted this first day of April 2019.
Thank you. We, we don't need a motion on that, do we?
I don't think so.
Do you want us to motion on those two?
We should do a, um...
Motion on both?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'll back up, do a motion real quick on the proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2019. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I make a motion to accept the proclamation related to National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2019, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Buckman. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
I make a motion to accept the proclamation related to Arbor Day for Saturday, April 13, 2019, as presented.
I'll second a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. I found page number one. Okay, third item on the administrative business is the firewood access update for consideration.
Yes, I believe at the last meeting, Commissioner O'Donnell had brought in an email or a proposal to allow the public to go up and cut firewood in town-owned forest area. So I looked at the, the, kind of the proposal, and I had Zach also look into it. And so we reached out to not only the town attorney, but the Forest Service, and reached out to maybe some other municipalities that may or may not have a policy. And what I did here is I took the comments and highlighted the areas from each kind of person or municipality that we talked to. First, reached out to John Clapp about the proposal, and he's, and I'll just read what he says. While I do see potential liability issues for allowing people to go onto town property, do cut and remove wood, he thinks it can be overcome by a release and waiver signed by the person who receives a permit. It would be an assumption of risk issue for people wanting to take advantage of the program. Second item, there's always the potential for people claiming discrimination if they can't participate on the same terms, but as long as there's a reasonable basis for the differentiation, I don't believe this would be a problem, because I believe the proposal was for low-income persons to be allowed to go cut wood. The proposal seems, the proposal seems to be geared towards giving persons with limited means access to cheap fuel to be used for heating purposes. If that is the goal, it seems an admirable purpose, but it needs to be fleshed out. Reached out then to Mike Kay, and right now, the RFP for tree, and the area that Commissioner O'Donnell marked was in stand five. He says there's no more than 20 drunk trees in that stand. His quote was, he thinks it'd be a huge mistake to allow anyone to cut trees before they are sold. Once the buyers have been identified, remove the trees and finish the harvest, maybe then, but not before. And then he goes on to say, it actually isn't a good idea to do after that either, because the firewood cutters tend to have more impacts on sedimentation than the loggers do. Most of the trees with an X on them are either tree of heaven, an invasive exotic, or they are small dead trees around the bike trails. And he'd like to have the buyers cut those down. Perhaps there's another section of the watershed where fallen wood can be cut, but don't do anything in the cutting areas in any of the future stands. He says, years ago, he helped a state park sell timber. One of their personnel let some general public cut down firewood in the area, and of course, they began cutting trees that the logger had purchased. Frederick City has a proposed policy for firewood collection. They said that before they could get their policy and program up and running, somebody stole about an acre's worth of wood before they could launch the project. They have a permitting, permitting system. No cutting of standing dead, only downed wood is allowed to be harvested, and you stay within the boundaries of the assigned site and collect only during summer months with no hunting, with no hunting conflicts. Some staff comments or concerns, recommendations. There must, there must have to have a policy in place, must have a permitting system in place, must have a waiver of liability, must only be downed trees and not in any sale area. Some concerns with the cutting is it may lead to water sedimentation problems, may lead to illegal harvesting, because staff obviously can't monitor it, may lead to bike, bike trail damage, may lead to littering, and it may be good to wait until after the logging is complete, then let them go into that specific stand. And those are staff's comments on that proposal.
Is there any questions for staff on this topic? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I want to thank staff for looking into this so intently. I mean, this is pretty well-vetted. I kind of want to echo some of your sentiments, you know, liability, there must be a system, we'll have a policy in place, absolutely. I think really, the, the key issue, in my view, is what was proposed initially was to have a set time and a set place where it could occur. The concept of fallen wood, I think, is best. I, I don't think there's any need to cut down live timber. I don't think that would be appropriate. You know, we, we want the, the best and highest standard for our, our forest. The other part is, I was encouraged to see that the attorney did sign off on the concept. I think there's value to that. I think we'd have to, and hate to say this to staff, but I think there were, there might be some way to find that, you know, designated, set time and place, there might be a means by which we could do it. I think what the initial proposal came from, from the town resident, if I read what he had written correctly, it was like a marked-off area actually near the roadway, so we wouldn't have people trekking into the, to the forest in order to drop a live tree. I think the premise was dead fall that was new enough that it wasn't rotted, and close enough that it could be easily hand-carried out, and that would be the qualifier. I think that's something we would have to add, that it has to be hand-carried. It wouldn't be done by a mechanical process, like you're not running in there with a gator or a four-wheeler or an off-road vehicle.
Right.
Or even just a four-by-four. So I'd like to see those sorts of things added. But this is good, because I, truth be told, folks, I know there's an absolute need in our community for folks who heat their houses with firewood singularly. That is what they do. So this would be of real value and serve our community.
Commissioner Ritz?
No, I, I'm good. Thank you. Sorry, I'd...
Commissioner Buckman?
No questions.
Mr. Blanchard?
I'm good.
I'm also good. I don't have any questions. I just think the downed trees is a good idea. It would help clean out the, the seasoned wood that's already there. I mean, they want seasoned wood anyways. You know, they don't want rotted wood, they want good seasoned wood. So what, what do you want us to do with this? Do you want us to come, you want to come back with a policy, or?
Well, I need direction from the board that if this is something that you want to pursue, we'd have to come back with a policy and a permitting system, and a permit for board approval.
Would we want staff to work on the policy and come back with, with the proposal?
Yes, personally, yes.
You won't see it back till probably July or August, with everything else we have going on.
I would like to suggest if we could, keep that reg, the fee, the permit fee down as low as possible. If it's for people who need the wood because of financial reasons.
Right.
It might prohibit them from using it.
That, they're helping us out, too. They're clearing out the wood.
Right.
And carry out only. Would be good, or wheelbarrow. Would be good for the policy. That way, we don't tear up anymore when we have to.
So, Mr. Swinney, do we need a motion to direct staff?
Would you like a motion for that, or just direction?
Yes.
Yes, she would. Any motion on that, please?
Okay, I'll give it a run. So you're looking for a policy and a permitting process? Is that correct?
Yes.
And policy would be guidelines, is that accurate, in what you're looking for? Okay, all right. I make a motion for town staff to be directed to create a firewood access policy and a firewood access permitting system.
For the town property?
Yes, for, for town property.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any other comments before we go on?
I would just ask for consideration related to, like, human-powered transport of stuff in and out within sight of road, something akin to that, and limiting it to town residents at this point in time.
Town address only? Just like the fishing and the...
Is, is fishing also 21727 by zip code, or is it strictly town?
Fishing state of the Mar, state of Maryland.
Okay, all right.
Hunting is Emmitsburg resident only.
Okay, so I...
So you want to do residence, they would like it to resident only?
I think resident only would be appropriate right now, unless we hear otherwise from the community. And I would be open to consideration of that again, so.
When you say resident, you mean of the, of the 21727 zip code, or?
Of the municipality.
Of the mi...
Is it zip code?
Right, you need to, yeah, it needs to be a...
21727 zip code, I'd say.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you do 21727, then that's the entire zip code, that's not just municipality, town residents.
That's fine.
Yet they would still need to come into the town office, because it's town property.
Right.
Right.
Everybody understands that.
You have to come and get a permit anyway.
Great, great, okay.
And a lot of the outside residents from the town use firewood more than what the inside of the town does. I would say so. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries five to zero.
Again, thank you, town staff, for digging in.
There's no consent agenda tonight? Town Treasury report, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. As of March 1, 2019, the cash balance was $5,683,968. Deposits were $32,074. Withdrawals were $140,832. The operating balance forward at this time is $5,575,210. And as per the norm, here are the top 10 checks for your review. And if there's a need, questions for staff, if they're able at this time to answer.
Any questions about the Treasury report? Commissioner Ritz?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, actually. I see that the last line item is for Royer's Computer Networks, and just not even related to the, the checks, but that the recent IT upgrade from that company, very, very nice. I don't, I'm not getting any of the emails from a Nigerian prince and all the...
It's, it's really helped speed things up.
It catches the spam, there's even that quarantine folder and...
I think I need to get it on my phone.
Nice.
Stop forwarding them to you. I'll get you one day.
But no, it's, um, it's good.
Any other questions for Treasury report? Glenn?
No, I'm good.
Okay, moving on. There is no planning commission report tonight?
No.
Okay, we're finally at the agenda. Finally. All righty, agenda item number one, approval of the bid to purchase a replacement for the 1996 dump truck for the town.
Yes, thank you. Before I get started, if the, the bid for the truck is approved, it takes six months to get the truck in. It will be paid out of next fiscal year, fiscal year 2020 budget, but we need to get the approval now so that we can have the truck up and running come winter. So, little background, when servicing the 1996 dump truck, the inspection revealed the rear frame rails were very rusted above the rear differential. The frame rails were found to be weak due to corrosion and rust. It was determined the vehicle was not safe to haul any loads in the dump bed. Staff took the vehicle to another inspection station to get a second opinion, and was informed the vehicle would not pass state inspection. The vehicle, prior to this, the vehicle was used for daily hauling operations, snow removal, salt spreading, water leaks, road repairs, et cetera. We're looking to purchase the vehicle out of Fund II. Currently, in the Fund II line item for vehicles, it currently has $271,012 in the budget. Once the new truck is ordered, the new, the old truck would be put out for bid, and the town will sell it as is. We received two bids, one from MJR Equipment, it's for $154,460. The second bid is for, was from Truck Enterprise of Hagerstown, for $154,475. Staff recommends MJR Equipment, a couple reasons. Their, this is their line of work, this is what they do. They handle the trucks, the plows, the spreaders, et cetera. MJR will come to town to repair and bring parts when needed. Frederick County also buys all their trucks, plows, spreaders, et cetera, from MJR. And the town can get the parts from Frederick County also if needed. And their bid was very in-depth and very good quality. So staff recommends MJR Equipment for, to replace the 1996 dump truck.
I need a motion to accept the bid of MJR Equipment for $154,460 for a new dump truck for the town?
I make a motion to accept the bid from MJR Equipment for the purchase of a replacement dump truck. Sufficiency?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Blanchard.
Can I ask your question? This is not my...
Yes, go ahead. We have, we have questions now.
This is not my area. I don't know anything about dump trucks. Is two bids standard, or...
It's a very specific vehicle, and two bids is all that we could get. Ideally, we like three, but we can only get two.
And this is the going rate for...
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I never see bids come in $15 to each other, so, you know, it's, both are very competitive bids.
Where's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm done.
MJR, where are they located? Are they Hagerstown as well?
Let me look. I have their bid right here.
Harrisburg.
Harrisburg? Okay, Harrisburg.
Local enough, I guess. I, I just, you know, I keep things local. Regarding number two, they'll come to town to repair, bring parts when needed, so it's fairly local enough. And regarding the budget, we currently have 271012 in the budget. I'm assuming we're going to carry forward equivalent that, are we going to be seeing that in the next couple weeks, that, that fund being carried over, that would actually be paying for this?
Right. Each year, we try to put about $65,000 in the Fund II under your vehicles to prepare for vehicle replacements. We have the town car that's also needed to be replaced, which will be coming up at the next meeting. So we may have to add a little bit more to kind of bounce back from this purchase. So, yeah, we'll continue to build on that.
So does anybody else see buying a pickup, buying a dump truck every 23 years is frivolous?
No.
A, a real question, however, the salt spreader and the plow that we have, are they going to, are they modular, so they fit with the new one, or do we anticipate purchasing those soon, too?
Yes. This price is, including the dump truck, the salt spreader, and the plow, what's currently on the dump truck will be sold with that dump truck.
Okay, so terrific. So we, I don't want to ask staff without asking staff, but it seems that this is a satisfactory vehicle for the needs of staff?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
This is based off of staff's recommendation.
Terrific, good. Thank you.
Will the money for the old one be put in, back into Fund II, into the vehicle?
I'll have to check with Mr. Table or exactly how that will work, but it will roll into our revenue, and then if there's excess revenue, then it will be put to Fund II. I have to check with Mr. Table or exactly how that will work, but it will roll into our revenue and then if there's excess revenue, then it will be put to Fund Two.
I, I think it should go back into the vehicle so we can repurchase another one when we need it.
I agree.
Do you know how much the car is?
I do not yet.
Okay.
I don't have those prices yet.
All righty, so when we put sixty-five in, so will we, we'll be taking, uh, probably nine, right now ninety thousand dollars out of the account when it rolls over? Cause we'll be putting another sixty-five in for next year.
Right.
Any more questions?
Nope.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Approval of the bid for the renovation of the town pool, pool bath house.
Yeah, just real quick, it's postponed. Um, prod- uh, Program Open Space has not awarded the grant as of yet. We're supposed to receive, um, official notification from them on April twenty, shortly after April twenty-fourth of this year. Um, our initial bids were considerably higher than we expected. We will be, um, opening the bid process back up and probably bring you, um, the bid recommendations in probably July, so that working can begin after this pool season.
All righty, number three. Approval of the bid for conduct, for construct a building on the wastewater treatment plant to house the vehicles' equipment and I guess you're putting the garage up, is that what you're doing?
Yes, it's, it's a, uh, storage garage for, um, the larger equipment. Currently, the water and sewer vehicles as well as the larger equipment sit out, exposed to elements, um, such as your trucks, your tractors, your cub cadet. And they're sitting out in the elements and they're exposed to it and they're causing higher maintenance costs, repair costs, rust, and we're seeing a quicker turnover. Um, this would be funded through the Enterprise Fund, Department Fifty, which is your sewer budget as an asset item, which would then be, it's basically a cash item that would be depreciated over the years. The new building, like I said, will house all the vehicles, the equipment, the tractors, the cub cadet and the boat. This will also free up room in the storage area to allow for better workstations, um, for the staff when they are out at the sewer plant. Again, we only received two bids, um, Hanover Building Systems for thirty-five thousand, eight seventy and New Mart Builders for twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. Staff does recommend going with the Hanover Building Systems, uh, for a couple of reasons. The snow load is heavier on it, which means it can bear a larger amount of weight when it snows. It does come with a stone and concrete bear, included with the vapor barrier and the New Mart, uh, building does not. Hanover has a thirty-five-year fade warranty. Um, there's no fade warranty mentioned in New Mart, New Mart bid. There's a fifty-year-old, fifty-year overall warranty with Hanover. Uh, New Mart is twenty years. With the Hanover building, you get overhead doors that are insulated. Hanover will obtain all the permits and the, uh, overall, the building and the warranty are better with the Hanover Building Systems. And so staff recommends going with the Hanover Building for thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy.
Is this a fully enclosed building? I'm, I'm trying to understand if it's a shed or-
Yes, it is. It's a fully enclosed building with garage doors that will go up and down, they're insulated.
Okay, will it have, uh, well, will it be an office, like a heated office for staff or something akin to that?
No, this will strictly be, um, right, storage. Yes. If you've been out to the wastewater treatment plant, it's in desperate need of storage.
Yes.
Um, things are just kind of put places.
Sure.
Okay, I need a motion for the, for a bid, uh, for a bid for the construction of a building at the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the contract on the building of the wastewater treatment plant.
Hanover Building Systems, right, correct?
Yes.
Thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Discussion.
I just want to know why we have, again, just two bids.
Because that's unfortunately all we were able to get. I mean, sometimes that's all you can get. We have problems getting people to bid on things. Um, I don't know if it's the location where we are, it's not through lack of trying.
It's because we post it, we don't seek them out.
We, we do it all. We post it, we send out letters, we make phone calls. Um, some things, as you'll see with Zach's, he was able to get twelve, ten, ten bids. There's times, uh, Ms. Shaw sent out thirty-five letters for the poolhouse. We received two. It's hit or miss on how mu- how we receive it.
Okay, go ahead.
Any other, any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Approval of the firm for complete, to complete the MS four project?
Okay, thank you. So for this year, we have three mandatory projects that the states, um, kind of on our backs, one has to do or actually, um, making us do. Uh, the three are, it's a baseline impervious assessment, so it's going to take a look at all of our impervious, which means driveways, concrete pads, things that water can't go through, and they're going to calculate the total percentage, and then they're going to subtract, uh, federal-owned buildings such as the post office, county-owned buildings such as this property, um, and the public school. And then, uh, also, they're going to subtract the Main Street and, um, North and South Seton Avenue. So they'll give us a number and then they'll do a twenty percent of that. So twenty percent of our, of the number that they give us, we have to treat. So, for example, it might be twenty acres that we have to treat impervious. So this is going to give us the, the premise of what we can do for project-wise, such as tree plantings, stream restorations. So this will give us our, our base number. Um, for this, we did receive, uh, ten different bids. It's on the next page, page twenty-two. Town staff is recommending, um, based on comparable bid packets, we recommend going Greenman Peterson, Inc. for the baseline impervious assessment. I'll keep going. For the second item would be the standard operating procedures manual. So basically, the state requires that we have a manual that, um, guides those who are, um, doing our inspections on our stormwater ponds and, um, other inlets, outfalls. Uh, they have, we have to have a manual, the states, what, how they do it. So, um, we received another ten bids, actually, we received eight on that one. And we're recommending to go with Advanced Land and Water. We've done projects with them in the past and they're very, very good company. For the third, um, it's going to be our annual inspections. We did ask for a three-year contract, so it would, um, decrease our cost in the long run because they are, we have to do the annual inspections from now for forever. Um, it's something we have to do through the state. So for that also, we are, um, seeking the advanced land and water. Uh, the standard operating procedures and the, um, inspections go hand in hand, so we think it would be good to, to have them do that. And I can answer any questions if there are any.
Is there any questions for Zach before we make a motion?
Uh, yes, just to understand what we're buying here. I, I get the, the notion of the, we're quantifying the impervious surfaces that we're responsible for, um. Does that include private properties, like for example driveways for private homes, residential?
That's correct.
Also, okay. And we're determining that and then we're going to purchase an offset, is that correct? Do I understand that also?
No, so basically, so-
I mean, this isn't the purchase of the offset, but what's-
No, say there's a hundred acres of impervious in the town, the town limits.
Okay.
By that number, we have to treat twenty percent every five years.
And when you say treat, you mean switch it over to pervious surfaces, like, uh?
That's, that's an option, but what, what we're looking into doing is wetlands, um, making wetlands, planting trees, um, armoring stream banks, uh, retrofitting stormwater basins.
Okay, and this is within the community, we're not going somewhere else, purchasing somebody's farmiesmen or something?
We have an option to purchase credits, but I don't recommend that. I think we should try to clean up our water here in town.
Okay.
But that's, that's a possibility, but we're going to bring, once we get this completed, we're going to, uh, staff's going to get some projects together and we're going to bring it to the, the town commission and you guys will determine what we would do from here.
Okay, so not to be silly, um, but we've had a discussion of linking the university to the town. And as a hypothetical, were we able to create an easement between the university and the town across private land? Could that be tied into this, the way that that land adjoining the, like flanking, like the easement land? Uh, would there be something there we could do, like for a future offset?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because they still count our forest and I don't think, Mount St. Mary's is responsible for their own stormwater. Reason being, they're so large, so they have their own permit through the-
No, well, actually, no, what I'm thinking is literally like the actual easement, the actual, uh, what separates us from the university at this time is, I understand, it's private property and a lack of easement along Old Frederick Road, Old Demisburg Road, excuse me.
Okay.
Um, and were we able to gain that, to gain an easement across that land, that private land? I was wondering if in the future, this would be another means by which we could add to our offset.
It wouldn't add to our offset, it would actually, if there's any impervious in there, we would actually be responsible for that.
Sure, okay.
If that makes any sense. Unless you would want to do projects along there, you have to do actual projects. So if we would purchase land.
Right.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't do anything.
Okay.
Even if it's all wooded.
Terrific. And do we get any advantage by bundling, for lack of a better term?
So there was an advantage to bundle with advanced land and water, but after staff reviewed, um, there was just no comparison for the baseline impervious. Uh, Greenman, they actually did a, uh, preliminary, um, stormwater analysis for our whole town, which was very impressive, and they found key areas that were going to save us some money. They actually, most of the people, most of the firms that bid, they didn't put that we could actually get credit for some of our town properties that drains into the state roadways. So the road, the state's actually responsible for those, so I was impressed by their, um, finding of some savings for us.
Depth of knowledge in their hands.
Yeah.
Okay.
They included some really nice maps, um, which is going to be really beneficial. They've done, if you, if you look in the, the bids for the baseline, they've done some major projects through, uh, Maryland State Highway Administration, Montgomery County, Department of Transportation in Montgomery County, um, Department of, uh, Public Works, so they are very impressive. They've done a lot of good work.
And were you able to talk to State Highway or Montgomery County about them, like just sort of vet them?
Yes, I did call them and they highly recommended them.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
Advanced is a, a great company also. It's just, um, they've never really done a baseline impervious at that location, so.
So this is a project to, for planting or for a project of that?
Basically, this just gets us a number that we're required to treat, so we're going to be bringing you back something in the next couple of months.
How about, um, uh, a new, new businesses or new, new places?
So-
We, can we have them put in like a biotech area, um, for a storm bio?
Well, for an example-
Suggest them putting that in?
For example, the rudders, um, they're sp- they're required to meet two thousand and nineteen standards.
Okay.
So it will be considered treated.
All righty, it'll be already treated?
Yes. But the mayor did suggest, um, some re- really green, uh, techniques and rudders has agreed to do them, so.
All the green techniques.
We're very appreciative of that.
Is that, uh, surface?
I'm sorry.
Is that surface area like the Seton Center did with the parking?
So, the, the area's too big, it's too expensive for them to do that, but we-
Okay. Well, now they need heavy-duty concrete for the trucks. I didn't know they use it for some of their parking areas and all.
No, they, they, we did some things, putting EV stations and ask, uh, ask them to put those out there and also, um, um, along the stream bed. They were resistant to this and also with their, um, stormwater management.
And the tree bays also.
Oh, putting tree, tree islands out there, adding those to the parking lot, okay.
So we were able to negotiate some good things, which will save us in the future.
Any other questions?
I guess.
Mr. Ritz?
Are you managing, like overseeing both of these firms if, if accepted by the board then? Do you feel comfortable having two separate entities rather than one just doing everything?
I do. I feel comfortable and yes, I will be managing them.
And then the, um, is it Green, Greenman, so there, I guess, their lack of experience with the SOPs and, um?
Well, Advanced Land and Water, um, oh, for that, they're-
Cause we're choosing them for just the-
I see what you're saying. The price difference was just-
Baseline. We're using those, the, the, for the baseline imp- imp- impervious.
Yes.
Assessment.
Correct. And, yeah-
That's their strong suit, but I'm, I'm assuming then the other two, the operating procedures and the annual inspection, Advanced, you chose them because they're the-
Yeah, and Advanced also, they included water samples in their pricing, so they had really good pricing. Water samples is usually hundreds and hundreds of dollars and they're going to take a sample at every single outfall, which is very good for the town.
And that's in relation to the annual assess?
The annual inspection.
Annual inspection, okay.
Any other questions? Ben? I'm fine also. I need a motion for the, to accept the bids for the project.
If you could do, um-
One at a time?
Two, two motions, one for the Greenman Peterson for the baseline and then for the advanced land and water, the standard operating procedures and then the annual inspections. It's two different, going to be two different contracts.
All righty, I need a motion to, for, uh, to approve Bayline. Bayline Consultants?
Greenman Peterson.
Greenman Peterson.
Okay, so for clarity's sake, I'll, I'll make the motion, but I just want to clarify, um, I'm on page twenty-three of forty-six, I'm looking at baseline impervious assessment and simple re- simple restoration plan comparison chart. So their work responsibility would be baseline impervious assessment and simple restoration plan, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the firm that we're choosing, it would be Greenman Peterson, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
For that first one, very good, okay. Therefore, I make the motion to accept the Greenman Peterson Incorporated bid of fifteen thousand dollars for the baseline impervious assessment and simple restoration plan.
Yep, perfect.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any other comments before we vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for the restoration.
The standard operating procedures and inspections.
Okay, so I'll take this one at a time. Mr. President, is that all right for you?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to accept the bid from Advanced Land and Water in the sum of four thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars related to the standard operating procedures compare, uh, the standard operating procedures.
Manual.
Manual. Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any other questions?
I do.
Mr. Ritz?
One, um, have these two companies collaborated before that you're aware of?
Yeah, there's no collaboration, um, needed. They're totally different.
So what one does doesn't affect the other.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
What was my other question? Oh, the actual funding for this. Okay, so we're, we're accepting the bid amount tonight. Where, where's the money coming from?
It's going to come from Fund Two in fiscal year twenty twenty, um, with the upcoming budget, you'll see.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries-